Stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning, June 11th. A meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left Commissioner Tom Rolfe, to his left Brandy Spangler will be taking care of us today. Good morning Brandy. To my right Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning.
And Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. There are agendas in the front as well as a sign in sheet. We'd like people to sign in so that we have a good record of who has attended our meeting if you would before you leave please. And we will start with, we don't have any consent action items, Mr. Baltz, so we'll start with item number three on our agenda, which is a grant task order, number two, three, dash zero, seven, dash four, dash five, one, dash zero, zero, six, dash zero. Amendment one between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I am Laurel Reek, Environmental Health and Disease Prevention Division Administrator for Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you the HIV Prevention and Immunization Services Grant Task Order Amendment Number One, which is between Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services and Lewis and Clark Public Health. This is an extension of the existing contract that brings us through March 31st of 2025. This is funded with $49,970. This grant task order is supporting HIV prevention services to reduce transmission of HIV and promoting immunizations for vaccine preventable diseases to priority populations at risk for HIV. We are currently working in collaboration with Peerview Health Center to provide outreach events in which we are offering HIV testing, education, and referral in conjunction with offering immunizations for those at risk of HIV. STACK recommends approval of this extension and additional funds.
Thank you very much. So to sum it up for someone who doesn't talk task orders and all of that kind of stuff. This is in addition to our, our grant and an extension to our grant for these services that we've been providing all along. It's just the state is adding an extension and $49,970 to our work so we can continue that.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Questions Commissioners? Any questions for?
With that fine explanation, to clear out the language that not everyone understands. Can I put forth a motion?
Well, after we, after we offer, offer up public comment here, is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right. Uh, this is just for this item. So if you have public comment on this item, you're welcome to come forward. If not, later items will be, will offer that as well. All right. You know, public comment, is there a motion please?
Uh, Chairman Hunthausen, I move that we approve the grant task order twenty-three dash oh, seven, dash four, dash five, one, dash zero, zero, six, dash zero. Amendment one between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as presented by Ms. Wright.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the grant task order as presented. Further discussion Commissioners? Thank you. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another grant task order. Uh, twenty-five dash zero, seven, dash, four, dash, five, one, dash, one, zero, three, dash, zero between Lewis and Clark County and the Department of Public, the State Department of Public Health and Human Services. Please.
Again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, I am Laurel Reek, the Environmental Health and Disease Prevention Division Administrator. Today I have before you the HIV Medical Case Management Grant Task Order between Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services and Lewis and Clark Public Health. This is funded with $22,800 for services between July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This grant task order is to deliver medical case management services and support services to meet the needs of HIV infected individuals. Medical case management provides a range of client centered activities focused on improving health outcomes in support of HIV care continuum. The scope of work also has provisions for emergency financial assistance for urgent needs to improve health outcomes and reimbursement for vaccine, vaccination counseling and referral during client visits. All these services are provided through a contract with Peerview Health Center, which will be seen in the near future. Staff recommends approval and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions Commissioners? Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner.
Um, could you just generally give me a number as to how many people this contract serves in, you know, within the year? Are we talking two people or 50 people?
The last time that I had a number from Peerview, it was 29.
Okay, that's a obviously an important number. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other questions? How about public comment on this item, on this grant task order? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant, uh, grant task order twenty-five, oh, seven, four, fifty-one, one, oh, three, dash, zero by, between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Health and Human Services as explained by Ms. Reek.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the task order as presented. Further discussion, Commissioner, further discussion. Thank you Laurel, appreciate your work. All right, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024 dash four, five to levy and assess the Countryside Rural Improvement District Number 2021 dash four. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special Districts Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2024 dash forty-five to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $150 upon each benefiting property within the Countryside Road Rural Improvement District. With a total of 59 benefiting properties, a total of $8,850 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. This subdivision is located in the North Valley to the west of Hauser Dam Road, um, just across from Hauser Lake. The Countryside Road District was created through a citizen initiated petition in 2021 to improve and maintain Countryside Road, which is about one mile in length. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow removal and sanding, drainage and culvert maintenance, grading, gravel maintenance, and magnesium chloride application. The maintenance assessment is currently $105 per property per year and is not sufficient to provide the maintenance detailed in the resolution that created the district. We have seen a significant increase in the cost of road maintenance over the, the past two years, specifically with the cost of road grading. These increases have resulted in a projected budget shortfall for district maintenance. An increase to the maintenance assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Countryside Road RID can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district and maintain the investment that property owners have made on their road. This is a total increase of $45 per property per year. An evening meeting was held at the West Valley Fire Station on April 17th, 2024 with a total of 11 attendees. Legal notice of the increase in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 25th and June 1st, 2024. Um, I just checked downstairs this morning, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Uh, questions Commissioners? Any questions? So, uh, just to, to reiterate, uh, there was a meeting held. And go ahead, I'll just recap that.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a meeting held in the middle of April. Um, and all countryside benefiting properties were invited to the meeting at the West Valley Fire Station. Um, again, we had 11 attendees at the meeting. Was a, a good discussion. Um, this, this district is a little bit challenging. Uh, as I stated, it was just created in 2021. Generally, we do a better job estimating our maintenance assessments. However, since 2021 and when this, this just, this district was actually estimated, which was 2020, we've seen a huge, a huge amount of inflation, um, in our, in, in our whole world, but, but also in our construction market. So unfortunately, um, the estimate made in 2020 just doesn't quite hold up to what it costs today. Uh, the work was done last summer on Countryside Road. A lot of, um, gravel went on that road, several culverts were installed. Uh, we need to do a few more culverts. Um, this improvement project was also hit with a, a big amount of inflation and was impacted significantly by, by what we saw after COVID. Uh, the initial bid for this work was, was turned down because it came in so much overbid. So we had to trim up the project. We had to, um, just get a little bit creative about it. Um, and what we did was, uh, because we got such a good price on gravel last, last year, we focused primarily on gravel. And we will continue to focus on drainage, um, as we can with this particular district. Uh, another thing that happened with the initial improvement was that our interest rate went up significantly. So we were at 1.55% when this district was estimated. We jumped up to 5.75%. So we also had to mitigate that effect. Um, a lot of challenges with this specific district and, and unfortunately, just due to the timing, uh, when it came about. Uh, Caleb and I, um, are, are working to, to, to continue to provide, um, maintenance on this to ensure that that improvement, um, is maintained, uh, for the life of the, the debt that, that will incur, you know, for this project. Um, I'd also say that the residents on Black Sandy Loop also secured a grant, if you'll recall, with this project through the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. So that applied about, um, $61,000 to that improvement project to help with the, uh, the drainage work uh, that needed to be done as a result of the 2019, um, North Hills Fire that occurred just to the north of this area. So a complicated project, um, one that was hit with unfortunately, a lot of challenges from the, the outset. But certainly, um, I, I think we're in a good place now. Unfortunately, we do have to propose that $45 increase, um, to stay on track. My hope is that that, as, as we hopefully see this market level out, um, we won't have to consider, uh, another increase for a while. Um, but like all of us, we, we don't have, have the control we wish we had maybe on our inflation right now. But, um, we certainly have done our best to explain to residents what's happening and, and the reason behind the increase. And that I do think it's a, a worthwhile, uh, way to move forward to ensure that we maintain this, this area over time. Uh, we also have cut the magnesium, uh, chloride application. This will also save significant, um, funding, even though the resolution, um, was created with it. During that meeting, we talked about cutting that, uh, to save money right now. And that was, um, I, I believe well received as a, um, you know, a common ground solution. So.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate the folks it turned out to help discuss how to move forward. So that, that helps us. Um, any questions Commissioners? Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, Commissioner Payne.
Jessica, you never bring us frivolous, um, suggestions and I'm sure this is a good one. However, I do question, okay, what happens if you don't increase this $45? Then what happens? If, if we say no way, we're stuck with a hundred and five dollars per property, because that's what you said you'd do, then what happens? What is it you don't provide if we, if we don't increase this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, that's a great question and thank you for asking it. Uh, if we, if we do not continue to assess what it costs to provide the maintenance, um, that this road will need, uh, we won't have the funding to do the maintenance. We'll come up short on what we'll need to have the road graded to continue with the drainage work needed throughout this corridor. Um, and, and all of that will just be put on hold. Uh, we would not have, um, this, this area does not see a ton of snow, but when it does see snow, it drifts badly generally. Um, so we do have contingency in there, you know, for a heavy snow year. Um, we build that assessment using what we see on an average year for snow. So, so not that huge year, not the year we've just had, but, but more that, that average amount. Um, delaying maintenance on our road networks can be detrimental over time. So if we don't continue to maintain those roads on a scheduled, um, you know, in a scheduled way, we end up losing, losing part of that investment that, that people are paying for. Uh, so I, I think it's worthwhile to maintain it. If you, if you've put the money out to put the investment on the ground, it's worthwhile to spend that little bit more and make sure that it's maintained over the life of that improvement.
Thank you. Anything further Commissioner?
Um, I was just thinking about the cup, the cost of a cup of coffee. If you stop at Starbucks and get a latte, it's, you know, 10 bucks a stop. So if you gave up your coffee at Starbucks four and a half times, you'd pay for this. I mean, difference in hundred and five and 150. Not all of us stop at Starbucks, but I'm just trying to keep this in perspective as how the cost of things has gone up and this is how we have to address it. So, thank you. It's just a comment, not a question.
Thanks Commissioner. Commissioner Rolfe, anything?
Uh, you mentioned, uh, holding off on some work on drainage and what's the future there?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, thank you. I, we, um, initially had this project engineered for the, um, hydrology and hydraulics. Uh, KLJ provided that engineering and the reason for that is because this road network, um, while only a mile long, does drain a significant area from the north. When we lost a lot of that vegetation from the North Hills Fire, that impacts drainage significantly as you lose that vegetation and, and what's slowing that water and, 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 you know, helping that water, you know, go where it's always gone. That's, that's changed, changed significantly. The other thing an engineering firm can do is determine what size culverts need to be. Um, unfortunately, because of the topography of this road, because of the hill it's on, because of the rock outcroppings throughout this corridor, utilities are buried very low. Um, so while our engineering report showed that, you know, maybe we need a, um,
Maybe explain the utility.
What do you mean utilities are low?
Um, your utility lines are running underground along the road network. So your, your telephone lines, your, you know, your, your different various buried utilities. Uh, and so while the engineering report, let's say, has recommended an 18 inch culvert or a 24 inch culvert, uh, in certain areas, there's simply not space to install that depth of culvert in that particular location. So what we've done is tried to put, um, you know, two 12 inch culverts next to each other to still provide, you know, the amount of drainage that you need, but in a way that can function in the topography and the, the area that we're dealing with in a feasible and economical way. Um, without, you know, relocating utilities, without, you know, blasting through rock or something to that effect that would be just, you know, outside the, the scope or the intent of this type of project. Um, so, so we've dealt with a lot of challenges there. Uh, we were able to put in five new culverts. There are several locations throughout this corridor identified for future drainage work to continue to maintain that initial improvement. If that helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. Thank you Jessica.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your helping, helping us, uh, paint the picture here. So, okay. Anything further?
No, thank you Commissioner.
All right. How about public comment on this item? Public comment on the Countryside Rural Improvement District? Do you have comment on the countryside? Just come to the microphone and, um, make sure the green light's on and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Cooper. Uh, I live at 3190 Mountain Meadows Road, which if you look at that map right there, is the green dot right on the very edge of the thing right there. All, all the way at the end of where the houses were added. And while I would, excuse me, while I would love to have a, a road that is treated near my house, this Countryside RID, um, does not go to my house. Uh, in fact, I'm as far as you can get from the project and still, and still be included in the taxes. Now, uh, if this went by my house, I would be much more apt to support it. Um, but I came and spoke against the original RID two, oh, two years ago, um, because it doesn't include my property and I don't go that way. That's not the way I go. It's longer to go that way. And, you know, once in a while if the snow, if snowdrift gets covered in snow in the winter, I'll go that way. But it's just not the way I go and I don't like taxes continually going up for something that is not, it's not part of the way I go. So, I mean, if you want to bring the RID out there, great, but if you look at my house, it's the tiny little green dot right there at the edge, at the very edge of all the other clumps on the left. It's on the, let's see, that's north. So it would be on the west side. So, um, apparently all only, the only people that wanted this project, uh, mostly were the Black Sandy Loop people and all the properties over there on the left side that is included that aren't on Countryside Road. All were not in favor of it. So I'm not entirely sure why. Um, you know, it, it doesn't do much good to come down here and, uh, say our opinion because you guys just do what you're gonna do anyway. But, um, unless you're gonna fix my road, I don't want to be included in the taxes. So.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate it. Further comment? Good morning.
I'm Margaret Miller.
You pull that little bit closer to you, the microphone. There you go. Thank you, Miller.
Oh, boy. I'm Margaret Miller. And I represent, uh, five Miller butterflies. We own government lot five. Okay. Okay. Bear with me, I kinda make notes here and there and charts.
No problem. You take your time. This is your time.
Uh, when the cost is on the rise, we make budget cuts. Property taxes have increased and I was hit hard. Additional about roughly a thousand dollars extra a year. Plus I got hit with the, the whoops. The miscalculation. Okay. Uh, our pockets are empty. Uh, and we don't benefit from the road improvement. Uh, Government Lot Five, it borders Hauser Lake. And BLM land, it's at the very mouth of the road. And it's vacant. Uh, the driveway, you turn off on Countryside and then there's a driveway there. And talk about culverts, I'll get to that. And then, uh, Lot Two is just a little beyond. It's on top of the hill. And Lot Three is vacant. The culvert proposals, they want to add four more. I'll have a picture of a culvert that was installed by Government Lot Five and it's useless. And, well, I guess you can't see it.
You're welcome if you want to hand it to me or, or Commissioner Rolfe and he can pass it down. Whoopsie daisy. Heads up. Watch out for that.
I have.
All right, just hand it to him and then go back to the microphone if you would please.
It was a minute.
Yeah, why don't, and you mind if we just pass it on so that we can see it and that you can describe it? Yeah.
Mrs. Miller, you have to go back to the microphone because we're recording this and so. Thank you. Just want to make sure everything you say is on the record. There you go. And we'll look at the picture as, if you can describe it as you go along here.
We contacted the contractor that installed that and it was put in by mistake, wrong area. You see, uh, on the south side of the road, it's hole. So the water, if we do get water, it's gonna have to raise up quite a bit to get into the culvert. The culvert is aimed right at the driveway. So there's no drainage proposal. Okay. So. Uh, so we're talking about a road that's roughly a mile long. There's eight houses on that road. And there's only three on the south side and the south side is lower than the north side. So. And I, like I say, we've got a useless culvert. How many more are being installed that serve the purpose? We've had been up there since 1990. We've only seen one major runoff. And it was either 2004, 2005. But there's no proposed drainage except head for Miller's yard. So would you, is that suitable for us? So. Uh, the problem with the road people were having was the hill in the first corner located on our property. Okay, when it was addressed, they did not have the money to do the hill. That hill can be a nightmare of the accidents because it is icy. You go down, you can't get up it. Now for us, we can go around that hill because we can come down in the backside. So, but, so we don't gain anything there. Okay. We had, you know, gravel added. You know, I concur with Jessica on what improvements they have made. But um, they're not really addressing the whole problem. Okay, now this RID, it should be prorated actually because I'm paying probably three times as much than the last person on the road. Because I own three parcels. And that's half that code. So. Uh, so you know, this increase is really gonna hit me more than one person. It's gonna hit me three times as much. So. And, you know, my thought was you would, you know, approve it because of the money. Everything comes down to money. You have an administrative fee of 5% that will increase money in your pocket. Now, well, in a way, yeah. No, no, I mean, let's wash that. But you see what I'm saying? It's gonna go towards some salary or something. But your administration fee, okay. Now, I guess you'll have to explain to me why this increase is in my best interest. Because we've really had no problem, you know, other than what I stated on that road since 1990. Except the hill and people kind of filled in the potholes and maintained it. And I was thinking we could maybe table this proposal for a year to see how things go. Maybe the cost of materials will go down. Because in my opinion, it's not gonna make a whole lot of difference in a year's time on the improvements. I mean, so far, we've gotten some gravel culverts and they either once or twice, maybe snow plowed. But it's nothing really great for the money. Okay. Yeah, well, my opinion on this first proposal, people were kind of misled. Uh, the communication, it's poor. Um, I mean, they kind of said, you know, we believed we were gonna get a whole lot more than what we got. Like I say, it's a whoops-a-miss calculation for improvements. Because, you know, you can't foresee the increase of cost. And like I say, everything is increasing so much, something has to give. And yeah. So. But, uh, well, I I guess that's my opinion stand about and, you know. So.
Mrs. Miller, thank you very much for your, for your public comment. Really appreciate you being here today.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is there further public comment on this item? Good morning.
Commissioners, I'm Dennis Prody. I live up in Black Sandy Loop, 6961. And I'm the guy that, before this rid was passed, filled in Black Sandy or Countryside Road and kept it passable. It takes normally about two and a half to three weeks worth of work to keep that road passable so that ambulance or fire department can get back in there. Um, this rid has been a godsend. Uh, for $4 a month increase because it was a miss. I'm missing something. Um, people lose more in that change in the dryer. I think this is a very reasonable request. I think that without it, uh, countryside again revert back to where it was. And if we don't go back and patch it, uh, it will become impassable and be unable to get fire back in there or ambulance or anything else in there. And I highly recommend this get approved.
Thank you. And it's Mr. Purdy?
Prody.
Prody, I'm sorry, I just wanted to announce it right.
Close enough.
Prody, okay. Thank you, Mr. Prody, for your comment. Appreciate it. Is there further public comment on this item? Is there further public comment?
Uh, another neighbor that is, wants to testify. He's serving in Iraq right now, but I have him on the phone.
Okay, Ty, you're on speaker. Go ahead and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Ty Drell. I live at 3175 Mountain Meadows Road, in Montana. Now, I have a lot of things to say against this rid. Because originally, it was, it was put up to all the residents up in the areas, six separate times. And every time that it was presented, it was shot down. Then finally, a seventh time it was put up. And there was a minority of people that signed on to the rid with the majority of people ignoring the piece of paper that was handed to them where they didn't sign it. So the minority of the people up there got a rid shoved down the rest of our throats. Where our taxes went up along with all these levies that keep getting introduced every year. And yet, only once since the rid has been established that I've seen any work done on that road on Canyon Ferry Road or Countryside Road at all. Now, it's been two years that I've been paying for this thing and it's only been improved once. And now you want to jack up the prices for that. Where is your reasoning behind that? There's been no additional work done. Now, once again, I live on Countryside or Mountain Meadows Road. I do not benefit from this and neither do any of the other residents up on West Haven, Mountain Meadows or Antle Way, because we all use no drift and Ferry Drive to leave our residence. So I am totally against this red and increases. And I don't want to see it jacked up and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you very much for your comment. Can, can you state your last name one more time and maybe spell it for us?
State your last name and spell it one more time.
Drell, D R A L L E.
Thank you, Mr. Drell. Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there further public comment on this item? Further public comment? Further public comment on this item? Okay, we're going to close public comment and Jessica may will have you back up and we'll answer a few questions if we could. I wanted to just discuss a little bit of process. So one question is how properties are deemed benefiting properties? Um, how, how we do that process and what happens there? And then there was a question about administrative costs. And there's a cap on those. If you could explain that as well. And, well, we'll start with those two and then, uh, well, maybe another question after that.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. To Mr. Cooper's comment about, you know, not, not being a benefiting property and not using the road. Uh, when this RID was in the proposal phase, uh, it was questionable where that cutoff should be or who's using countryside and who's going out Mountain Meadows and Snowdrift to the west. We, uh, consulted with a third-party traffic analysis engineer, Bob Abelin, who we use for a lot of our traffic counts. Um, he's an independent contractor. Um, he did a traffic analysis of the area to determine where that cutoff should be, who's going east, who's going west. Additionally, I believe most of the mailboxes on Mountain Meadows are located on Hauser Dam or just right off Countryside. They're, they're right on that, that east side.
Could you point it on the map for us, Jessica?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, absolutely. So the area in question here is to the western portion, if you can see where my mouse is. So here is West Haven, here is Mountain Meadows. Um, here is the start of Countryside Road as it goes all the way to Hauser Dam. The mailboxes are located in this area. And those Mountain Meadows on West Haven mailboxes are, are located there as well. So that was another factor that went into the traffic analysis. But he actually put the, the traffic counters on the roads in several locations. Um, a copy of that report, I believe, was used as an exhibit when this district was created to determine who actually was benefiting from this district. We don't take that lightly. It's, it's not a subjective process by the county. When it's questioned, it's in question, we do, we do look to a professional to provide that objective analysis to make the determination of where we should, should put that boundary. Um, moving on to
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Is there any clarification further you need about that, how benefiting properties are established? Um, when, when it's not clear, like subdivision, it says, oh, this is the subdivision, they're all using this road. Then we have to do a traffic analysis. And often, when it is in question, we hire a third-party traffic engineer to help us establish where those boundaries should be and using all these factors that you just described. Correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay.
Jessica, um, one of the commenters reminded us about the fire that came through there. And, um, I work with the various fire districts, we all do. And there's times when we need to get firefighters in there with their trucks and equipment. And whether you drive on this road or you always come in the back way, those fire trucks need to get in there because your road is blocked with a fire. Your property is benefiting. Also, you own this property. And when you die or give it to your kids or whatever it is, it has more value if it has a decent road system. You're, um, some buddy from far, far away would think, oh, this is cool and pay a million dollars for that lot, uh, if they can get in there on a decent road. Not everybody has the skills, um, that Mr. Prody has so that he can do it himself. So. And I'm thinking, Mrs. Miller may, I'm not sure if she knows how to run a, a plow or, or a road grader, but that's what I was thinking of. The roads benefit all of us. And whether you personally drive on it or the mailman or the school bus or um, your great aunt Tilly, when she comes to visit, these roads benefit us. It's part of our civilization. That's just
So, um, we've established how benefiting properties are created and the boundaries are created in general. Um, can you speak to the administrative fees?
Absolutely. Uh, with all of our, our rural improvement districts, the maintenance assessment is charged a 5% administrative fee, um, as allowed by statute. However, once that total assessment, uh, right, right now, we're proposing a total assessment for Countryside Road of $8,850. Once that goes, um, for any rural improvement district, I'm not saying Countryside Road would, would go this high. But once you get past that $10,000 mark, that's capped at $500. It cannot go beyond $500 regardless of how high that total assessment is. I believe for, you know, districts closer to town, like Treasure State Acres, for example, with all those miles of hard surface road, you know, over 300 benefiting properties in there, that total assessment is somewhere around $70,000, right? That administrative fee is $500.
Right. So it can't, it's capped at $500, no matter how
No matter what.
High the, the assessment goes. Can you, um, answer this as well? Um, when we establish an RID like this, this is relatively new, but any of them, um, we, we work with engineers and our own team to determine what are the improvements that, that are, that there's interest in, what are the maintenance items that there's interest in? And we do our best guess at estimating and with costs and what, what we might, in the past, anyway, we used a, uh, inflation factor that was kind of within the norm. So inflation in the last few years has gone way above the normal inflation norms. But we use that inflation factor so that, that we're, we're collecting enough so that those uh, tasks can be continued over the years. So we do that. But we also, in statute, once annually, we have you and Caleb and others in the Public Works Department evaluate each one of the RIDs the best you can and determine whether, uh, we're maintaining that enough resources in that RID to, uh, do the things that we said we were going to do. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so if you can explain that a little bit, and then the tasks that are in the, in the resolution that created, that created the RID, those are the only things that we can do with the money, right? Can't be used anywhere else. County can't take it and use it on another road. County can't pay someone else's salary with it. We can use that $500 maximum or any administrative fees, the rest of it all goes in there. And that's all in state statute. So that's not the county determining those things. That's all in state statute. Correct?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. Absolutely. Uh, when we receive a request for a new rural improvement district, uh, the first thing that happens is Caleb Marcus, our RID construction coordinator, or Jesse Whitford, um, who's worked in this program in the past, they go out to the area and they estimate the amount of work that needs to be done on any given road. Uh, so that initial estimate is put together. Based on what those initial improvements are, we determine what the maintenance on those improvements would be. For example, in Countryside Road with drainage improvements and gravel on the road, uh, the annual maintenance for that is going to make sure that those culverts stay clean, that they're not trapped with debris that would prevent their, um, their proper function during a runoff event. That, um, would also include an annual or, or every other year grading, uh, depending on when it's needed. So having a road grader come out, um, pull those ditches as much as possible, get that, that borrow ditch, um, cleaned back out and pull that, any lost material back up onto the road. Um, grade that road, reestablish crown, fix up any potholes that develop over the, the course of the year. Um, things like that. It can also be used to, um, you know, for this particular district, add any gravel, um, that's been lost in any specific spot. Um, a minimal amount, you know, we're not talking about the initial improvement, but just maintaining that gravel, that gravel surfacing. Uh, all of that is estimated and all of that is put into an, an initial petition that's circulated, um, among residents. And residents, while we'll put that information together, residents are responsible for circulating that petition and getting the required number of signatures. Our Lewis and Clark County policy requires that we get a minimum of 20% support to even consider uh, a rural improvement district. This district, I believe, uh, received 43%. And we move forward and I believe this district got, um, maybe around 10% initial protest of the creation of the district. If a district receives 50% um, protest, the district cannot be created. Uh, because we received far less than that, the district, this district did move forward. Um, each year, Caleb and I look at what maintenance costs now. Um, and we put that information into a budget worksheet for each rural improvement district that we have. We have about 150 different RIDs that we administer currently. We look at that revenue. We look at the anticipated expenditure based on those items that are covered by resolution. And we look at the financial, um, picture of each of these districts. When it looks like a district is going to have a budget shortfall and not be able to afford those items that are set forth in the resolution that created the district, that is when we schedule a meeting with the residents. Everybody is invited. We generally hold those, those at a fire station because those are, um, no cost. And we have a really nice working relationship with our fire departments throughout the county. Um, we hold that meeting. We invite everybody to participate in that meeting and, and, and look at the long-term, you know, budget worksheet that we've put together so that they can see with the projected revenue, the projected expenditure, we anticipate a shortfall. Um, we do add about 2.5% inflation that we, we factor in as we look a little bit towards the long term just to, to get a picture of how this district is projected to look in five years and 10 years. Will it continue to be underfunded or just did we have a, a bad one year there that will, will make up for over time? We factor all of that in and try to present that information to everybody. Um, while we are dealing with an increase here, we also do lower those assessments. Um, when we see, instead of a shortfall, if we see, as we look at revenue and expenditure, we anticipate a, a cash surplus, we also recommend decreases to these assessments, uh, occasionally. Right now, during a period of heavy inflation, that's not really the trend we have. But, but we certainly have brought, brought decreases to the, to the commission in the past. Um, as, as far as the resolution that creates the district, that outlines what that maintenance is, that, that is all that we can spend that money on. We could never use the money in Countryside Road to put towards, um, any kind of asphalt, any kind of other road improvement or, or maintenance that's not listed in that district. If, let's say, people wanted that road paved and, and we would never probably consider pavement of that road, right? It's, it's not an economical solution. But let's say a group of people wanted to use that RID to, to have the road paved. You couldn't do it without going through this entire process all over again. Um, circulating a petition with what that would cost, getting a, a minimum number of signatures and, and putting it a, a minimum number of signatures and, and putting it forward to those three public hearings, um, that we have to hold to create a district. Once a district is created, those districts are administered separately. So as that revenue comes in from the property tax bill, uh, for that particular RID, it's put into, um, it has a code on the revenue side. It has a code that it goes to for the fund where it's held. Uh, those funds, like I said, can only be used on those items set forth in the resolution that created the district. They sit in that fund, they roll over from year to year, they gain interest, um, and are, are specific to those funds. With 150 different RIDs, I think of it as like 150 different checking accounts that all have to be managed individually, uh, and separately. Um, let's see. I, I think, um, you know, Mrs. Miller, um, did bring up a question about prorating the assessment mechanism, um, something like, uh, for, for how much of the road network you're using, you should be assessed that much or, or something to that effect. Um, like we've been talking about, you know, this program is guided by state statute. There's a whole chapter of law that we must follow to create and administer these districts. Um, with that, there are specific assessment methods given that, that you may select from. One of those is equal. One of those is based on assessed value, uh, which, which isn't necessarily a great choice when you're talking about primarily single-family residential homes using generally the same number of cars and, and probably likewise a similar number of vehicle trips, uh, you know, per day. Um, we unfortunately cannot assess by the mileage, you know, used for each resident. That's not a legal means of assessment, unfortunately. Um, and I understand, we, we, you know, we get that question very frequently and I understand that that can be frustrating, um, but we just don't have that as a legal means that we can use, uh, for the assessment process.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Miller also, uh, offered, and I don't know if you've seen this, but it's a culvert and, um, just speak to the drainage plan a little bit and where we are.
Show us on the map where that's located if you can.
Approximately.
So we're talking, um, I believe right in, in this area and specifically I believe it's, it's right down here, uh, as we look here. Um, I believe that this culvert has been placed correctly by our contractor. This was not an error. I think even as you look at this photo, you can clearly see that this follows natural drainage. And while you would need a significant amount of water to come through to, to put this culvert to use, as we do, you know, put culverts in up the hill, all the way down the hill, right? We, we will see water moving through that system. And if we had a large runoff event, especially because of the loss of vegetation uphill, you could potentially see quite a bit more water coming through this network. And as we have a series of culverts coming down the hill and eventually culminating here in this natural drainage area, it's quite possible this could be put to use. Um, these culvert locations, as I've said, were engineered and they were engineered with, um, with a lot of data behind them for the amount of area being drained and, and then also designed to work, um, you know, we put them in down, downhill as we work up, but designed to work in coordination and conjunction with each other because that is, that is generally how water moves, um, through this corridor.
And, and there has been, uh, you talked about the engineer, there's a essentially a drainage plan. That was one of the most, uh, one of the most, uh, pieces of interest, I guess, for the folks bringing the, bringing the RID forward, right? The drainage issue.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, absolutely. The drainage is an issue and especially after a fire. Um, it was the recommendation of Caleb Marcus, our RID professional, that the drainage should be looked at by an engineering firm in this, in this instance. We don't always do that. Um, oftentimes Caleb, um, feels comfortable, but it's his best professional judgment. Uh, he's been doing this for a long time and he's, he's very good at what he does. And in this instance, because of the large area to the north and because of the change in, um, vegetation status, it's his recommendation that we, we actually run the numbers on the square footage of area being drained to this corridor.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Rolfe?
Yes, please. Um, I, I know there's, there's a frustration. It appears that there are 59 property owners involved in this from the documents here. Uh, and, um, if people have more than one lot, are they char, they're charged on each lot? Is that right? If it's within the district?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, that's correct. So each lot is, um, considered individually. And so if somebody owns three lots, they are assessed three times. When the petition goes around, they also have three lines for signature. When it's time to protest, any protest counts for the number of lots they have. So if, if they protested during that creation process for those three lots, that would have been also counted three times.
As a second question, if I might, um, if, if there's, there's 59 lots here, um, if people are truly unhappy with this, uh, we kind of have to go by majority rule, which is, it's the way democracy operates. Um, if they, if they want to dissolve the, the district, it would require then 30 signatures, 30 lots being represented to dissolve their, and the, the, the district. Is that right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, absolutely. An RID can be dissolved and, and it does go by, um, you know, uh, the same process as the creation that goes through the same process to, to walk it back. So you have an initial resolution of intention to dissolve, to dissolve that district. Um, a comment and protest period would be opened, legal notice would be published and mailed to all benefiting property owners that would be affected. If greater than 50% of people, um, opposed the dissolution of the district, it would not be dissolved. However, a district cannot be dissolved when it has outstanding debt. And because this district right now has an improvement loan, uh, the term of that loan is 15 years, we're already a couple of years into that. Um, once this district, um, has resolved that debt and paid that debt off, it would be eligible for dissolution.
Question, and another question, and that, we're not discussing that, that, uh, uh, initial cost that was to put this together i- in the, in this resolution. How much are they paying per, per lot for the original part? So that, what's their total bill for, for the?
Certainly. Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, the debt assessment portion of this district is, I believe, $123 per property per year for that 15-year term to pay off the initial improvement.
So now people would be, under this new proposal, they'd be paying 123 plus 150 or $273 per year.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Uh, you, you went over this very quickly, but in the, when we establish the RID, citizens passed a petition around and brought that RID proposal to us, correct?
Mr. Chair, correct.
Correct. And, uh, you said 43% of the folks sign that petition? And then, um, if, uh, citizens did not want it to move forward, we would have needed to see 50% or more, uh, protest that, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, that's correct.
And only approximately 10% protested the district?
Mr. Chair, I, I can't remember the exact number. I can, um, look quickly at the resolution that created the district. It is listed in that resolution exactly how much protest was received, but it was not, um, it was not anywhere close to 50% for this particular district.
Okay. I just wanted to, that was brought up as a comment that I wanted to make sure we addressed. Um, Commissioner?
Um, I need clarification on your answer to, uh, Tom Rolfe's question regarding the amount the RID will cost should this be adopted. I, I understood you to say that the original assessment is $150. No. And then this additional one will be, this will add on another $45. So the entire assessment will be $205 and did I entirely misunderstand that or, um, I, I guess I was thinking that it's 45 plus 115, not 45 plus 150.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, absolutely. I'll clear that up. When we have an, an initial improvement for a rural improvement district, we have generally an initial loan for that improvement. In this case, it was the culvert work, it was the gravel, it was the ditch work that was completed. Um, I, I believe, I, I want to say the total cost for that work was around $107,000 and that was put into a 15-year loan. Uh, the assessment for that loan over the 15-year term for each benefiting property, each of those 59 properties is around that $123, um, dollars per property per year. That is set, um, and that will be paid off, um, over time.
It's not what we're discussing today.
It's not what we're discussing today. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so what we can change, what we by statute are to look at prior to the first Monday, after the first of September each year, is the maintenance on that improvement. And the maintenance of this district has been $105 per property per year and the maintenance component is what we are proposing to increase to the $150 per property per year, um, moving forward.
That help, understands?
That, yes, thank you. So we're talking about two different things. We've got, when you built the road or fixed it all up, took over from Mr. Pody, um, you fixed all that and now we've got to keep it nice so that it doesn't all fall into the river. Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Sometimes I'm slow.
No, it is a little bit confusing, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you for the question and the clarification.
Further discussion, Commissioners, about this? Further questions about it? I think we addressed most, all of the, um, items that were brought up, um, in terms of , uh, questions from, from the public. I really appreciate you helping us out there.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, if there is not further discussion, um, then we need to discuss how we want to move forward. So it entertained a motion and/or further discussion.
Uh, Chairman Hunthausen, um, I move to approve Resolution 2024-45 to levy and assess the Countryside Rural Improvement District Number 2021-4 as presented by Jessica Makers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
And Mr. Chair, if I might, um, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, uh, motion, but I, I understand the frustration that's been caused, uh, because of, of the inflation that we're facing. And I really believe that our federal government has not been honest with us about how bad that inflation is. Um, that they tell us the inflation this year is at 3.6% and, and yet everything we, we, we touch is a heck of a lot more. And this is an example of it. Over th- three years, we've got a, about a 45% increase in our cost to, to, to operate this. Um, I do think that in order to maintain this district that has been set up by a majority of the people within the district, we have to go forward and, and support it. I do, I am, I am just very strongly believe that the federal government has not been honest about the cost of inflation and there, and that they are primary, the primary cause of those, of that, uh, of the inflation we're facing today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Payne, any?
No comment.
Um, I'm gonna support the resolution as well. I really appreciate the comments, David, and I understand, um, there's always questions or often questions about, um, why me? Why, why, why are we included in this RID? And so we have to try and be as objective as we can. And when, um, it is questionable, we do hire a third party. We try to be very thorough about how we determine, um, benefiting properties. And so, uh, that is beyond us just saying, oh, let's include these guys or these guys. We actually do traffic studies and figure out where, uh, that boundary should be. We do the best we can with that. And we do a very good job, I think, uh, our staff does in trying to estimate what the desired improvements and or maintenance are going to, uh, cost residents. We look at that annually and try to be very, um, diligent about keeping up, making sure that, um, if folks are depending on a certain level of service via their IR, RID, that that is maintained. Um, I think we've talked about the process and we follow, uh, just how it's laid out in statute. We cannot deviate from that and we, we don't. We, we follow the law in terms of how, how these are set up and how protests work and how, uh, petitions are, are done and how that process works. So, um, I, I have to, uh, agree with Commissioner Rolfe in that, um, you know, this is how it works. Uh, we all have some responsibility for the road or street in front of our home. Those are on us to, to kind of, uh, take care of those streets and roads that are attributed to the people that use them. Um, for example, we'd ne, we'd never have an RID on Hauser Dam Road because that's an everybody road and that's a recreational road. That's something that we take care of. Um, but roads that are attributed to, uh, local traffic, those are the ones that RIDs are usually the, uh, preferred solution and folks come forward and ask for that maintenance. So, um, I appreciate Jessica answering all the questions today for us and making sure that we understand how to move forward and I will support this as well. And anything further? Commissioner Payne?
I just want to remind all those people out there who are unhappy about their property tax increases, it impacts us just like it impacts everybody else. So when we make these decisions and not for this rural improvement district because we don't own property out there, but we each own property someplace and we each of us have to pay in to take care of the roads and it may not entirely make us happy, but taxes impact all of us and when they go up, it hurts. That's all.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. And without further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-46 to levy and assess the Rosemary Acres Rural Improvement District Number 2007-1.
Commissioners, um, morning again. Jessica Makers, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Uh, today you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2024-46 to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $240 upon each benefiting property within the Rosemary Rural Improvement District. With a total of 54 benefiting properties, $12,960 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. This district is located to the north of John D., John G. Mine Road. Um, I left the highlight on, there is a, a different, um, rural improvement district here that's kind of overshadowing the color here, but if you look at just that blue outline area, this is the RID that we're looking at, um, today, just to the north of John G. Mine Road and just to the east of, um, Green Meadow, uh, Drive, like just between Green Meadow and Applegate. The Rosemary RID was created through a citizen-initiated petition in 2007 to improve and maintain the roads within the district, including Rosemary Drive, Sage Brush Drive, Time Road, Chad Road, Holman Road, and Percy Road. Maintenance provided by the district includes snow plowing and sanding as needed, crack sealing, pothole patching, sweeping, drainage maintenance, and chip sealing. The maintenance assessment has been 117. The maintenance assessment has been $117.15 per property per year since 2007. However, we've seen a significant increase in the cost of road maintenance, specifically in this instance, the cost of chip sealing. These increases have resulted in a projected budget shortfall of approximately $22,000 for the next chip seal cycle, which is scheduled for fiscal year 2028. An increase to the assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Rosemary RID can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. This is a total increase of $122.50 per property per year. An evening meeting was held with residents to discuss the need for this increase at the West Valley Fire Station on March 20, 2024, with a total of nine attendees. Legal notice of the increase in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 25 and June 1, 2024. Again, as of just this morning, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners, about this proposal, proposed increase? Any questions? Okay. About public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none? Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-46 to levy and assess the Rosemary Acres Rural Improvement District Number 2007-1, as explained by Ms. Makers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? Just want to take this time to thank you for all the work that goes into preparing these and evaluating the RIDs. Jessica Ford and Caleb for the reviews and making sure that they are viable going forward and that, as I said before, that the service that we've committed to performing in these RIDs that citizens want, it remains and it is able to be funded. So I appreciate you making sure that they are viable and sustained. Thank you.
Mike, I am wanting to point out, there's been no increase in the assessment since 2007. So we've had 15 years without, and somebody did some pretty accurate calculations. And particularly with the inflation we've had and all the events in the last 15 years, I think you've been doing a pretty good job. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right, we are at that time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Welcome. You just gave us your name, address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Rush. I live at 720 Holter here in Hillona on the west side. Just for the record, my street looks like a war's lawn, not even taking care of the streets. Don't care of the streets, don't take care of the boulevards, don't take care of the sidewalks. Of course, we pay for all of that. We pay additional for the trees, and of course, the trees aren't taken care of either. You ought to just try to get a tree planted. It's terrible. Now, I paid $1,600 for taxes per half two years ago. Now I pay $3,000. That's a lot of cups of coffee, isn't it? I don't know where all that money's going, but I have noticed you voting for things like a commission to study pandemics, $88,000. A commission of probably people that are not doctors or scientists who are going to decide that we're having a pandemic and are going to decide how they're going to unconstitutionally control us, I suppose, like they did last time with the shutdowns. Nothing that ever worked. But you voted for those matching funds. I was here, I watched it. You know these people. You know these bureaucrats. You've been known by their first name. But they're not your friends. The people you represent are me. That's who you represent, the people you don't see here. These are the taxpayers. These are the people that you are taking the money right out of their wallet. I am a widow. I live on a fixed income. You are going to tax me out of my home. Have to start saying no. You don't have to match every grant. I know your friends, the bureaucrats, think that if you don't get a matching grant, that you killed their grandmother. But that's not really true. You don't have to match every grant. Every idea that comes down from Washington or down from the state is not a good idea. And certainly, a commission to study pandemics is not a good idea. You cannot stop a virus. Any scientist will tell you that. And yet you voted for it. Go ahead and match those funds so that they can have a commission of non-doctors, non-scientists, to decide how they're going to control this community if they should deem there's a pandemic. That's basically a step toward fascism. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mrs. Rush. Appreciate you being here today. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none? Commissioners, thank you very much. We will stand adjourned.